It started, we've got a lot on the agenda. So, let's go ahead and start with number one, which is presentation on the scope of work for the HUD EDA grant project for the K-1 building.
Thank you, Council. We've got representatives from our project team. Nicholas Gray with Thompson Watermark, who is architect on the K-1 hatch portion, as well as Rebecca Bryant with Watershed, who has been lead architect on the campus master planning, which they're both going to present. But, we kind of discussed to kind of do a quick recap of how we got to this point, and give you kind of an overview. And I'm gonna throw a lot of numbers, stop me if it gets confusing, or if I cover something too quickly. But as you may or may not know, the K-1 Center, which is the main school building, the, let's say, the historic school building, the brick and mortar building, that is connected with the north-south, as well as three wings that run east to west. On the main floor, which you enter from Church Street, there's approximately 28,000 square feet. And within the basements of the three various wings, there's another 16,000 square feet, which represents a total of, when it was an operable school, of nearly 44,000 square feet of heated and cooled school space. So, as we move forward, we had the opportunity to receive two sources of funding to redevelop the K-1 Center. Not necessarily in the order that we received. We received a HUD grant, which was actually received by the Ballin County EDA through an appropriation by Congressman Carl of $750,000 that didn't have any necessary commitment to a match or anything of that nature. Also, the city directly received a federal EDA grant of $2,500,000 with a commitment from the city to match 650,000. So, then we went through the process of issuing two architectural and engineering contracts, one for the, think of it as the building A&amp;E, which was 293,000. And then we did an appropriation for campus master planning and other associated A&amp;E work, which we as a city were 100% responsible for. The 293,000 is, can be applied toward the grant. In addition to that, there's a couple of tasks that the city had to take on 100% on themselves. That was one, the asbestos abatement, which we have now received full clearance from both EDA and HUD on that. As well as, the HUD money had some additional NEPA and National Historic Policy Act requirements, which we hired Efferman Associates, which is still working that part of it. So, here we're looking at a proposal that's really, we're trying to be very careful and thread the needle. The HUD money and the EDA money cannot really be mixed together. They have to kind of be, proceed separately. So, we want to propose kind of a two-step project. The first phase would be a demo and a brand-new roof system on the building, which would be funded by the HUD. And it would be a standalone project that would go out to bid, and theoretically, a different contractor could win that bid and perform it separate from the second phase of the project, which is the redevelopment of the K-1 Center for the purposes of Hatch, which would be using the EDA fund. Our goal would be, if we can get a blessing tonight on the scope of work that we're discussing for the building itself, is to get the roof package out in the fall of this year, which is pretty soon, and get that moving forward. And then with the actual building redevelopment plan sets and contracts, get those out in the street in the winter of '24. Just so you know, by terms of the EDA, we have to be under contract with a contractor by July 6 of 2024. So, as you can see, that's less than a year away. So, where are we at money-wise? Well, when you add all those numbers together, you get $3.9 million. You subtract the 293,000 that's already committed for the A&amp;E services, that leaves a balance of $3,607,000. We also had a little tornado damage back last year, and we ended up with an insurance settlement that netted out $130,000 that has to be applied back to fixing permanent work of the building. So, that leaves us with a budget of $3,737,000. So, what the architects are going to present to unite is a scope of work for the actual building that will house Hatch. And I do want to share kind of some overarching goals that the design team had in the mind in getting to this point to present to you. First of all, it was paramount that we maintain the historic streetscape facade of the building, meaning that post-redevelopment, when someone drives by, it looks just like the historic building. It has been there for nearly 100 years. Also, on the new roof, and it is a requirement of Alabama Historical Commission, is that the materials and colors will be complementary to the historic nature of the building. And, as you know, it's asphalt shingled, which is not anything special, but we'll also have to rebuild that roof in a manner that meets current code for energy and things of that nature, and that's insulation, water shield and such, and wind loading for the type of shingles used. The other goal is that, at some point in time, not that terribly long ago, the school board came in and removed all the original large school windows, infilled with plywood and framing, and put in pretty cheap, commercial, small windows that really are not appropriate to the building. And I think it's a big goal, is that we honor the original school building by returning those large windows to it, using modern materials, but with a look that would be appropriate to the building, that also meet the energy code as well. And then, we're going to have to do all this and honor the history of the building while delivering a very dynamic and usable business incubator space for Hatch, which is going to be the tenant, because they were the driver of these grants fund. So, we are recommending, and it is several things that will alter the building. One is, we're recommending a demolition to truncate the south wing to the same depth as the north wing. Part of that is symmetry. This is a later addition. And that would eliminate 6,000 square feet on the main floor, 6,000 feet of basement. And this area is one of the problematic areas. There's been a lot of water intrusion, and there's already structural failure, meaning the hallway has dropped and pulled away from the framing, and it's just a heavily damaged area. Also, the recommendation is that the center wing, which contains the gym auditorium, is also a later addition, and it is recommended that that be removed from the main building as well. And there were several schools of thoughts. One, there was not a definitive purpose in the programming of Hatch or any other end-user of what that facility could, that portion of the facility could actually aptly be used for or redeveloped for. And secondly, the whole idea is that by opening up that center of the building, two, you're able to re-daylight the windows on the remaining facades that face that area, and it opportunity for a courtyard that can be very intimate, multi-use space, support events, and things of that nature. And then, of course, the roof, rebuild and repair the north wing, the main school that runs north to south. And then, on that large, extra-wide wing that's remaining to the south, is we would trust that hole, because Hatch has already indicated a real need for that kind of open-meeting training space. So, right now, that is classrooms on each side with a central hallway, and those central hallway walls are load-supporting. So, we would actually take that roof completely off, put trusses back in, and so that it spans the whole width of that wing, so it could be an open, multi-use space. Also, part of the proposal is to eliminate the flat portion of roof that is on that wing. That's been a big problem, and that's led to a lot of the water intrusion that has caused the damage. So, what are the yields here? What this would yield in this reconfiguration is you would end up with 15,000 square foot on the main level for Hatch, as well as on the north wing, 3,500 square feet of basement for Hatch or other flex-use space. And that nets out 18,500 square feet of heated and cooled tenant-ready space within the K-1 building. And just to kind of give you an idea, and even though, when we discussed this earlier in a team's meeting, this calculation was done after the fact, but it's kind of very relevant, is right now, about $200 a square foot is what is the budget to deliver what we call a white box building. That means that the exterior, the envelope, all the MEP, everything is finished and ready for a tenant to move in, about $200 a square foot. If you take that, multiply it by 18,500 square foot, that comes up to $3.7 million. And right now, our budget is $3.7 million and $37,000. So, that tells us that we have at least gotten into the realm of possibilities of the budget that we have to work with. But there are some challenges that we face. One, we have to go back and amend the scope of work with EDA if this council is willing to approve the scope of work as it is presented. And because right now, the way the grant was written, which there's no fault in it, it was to deliver 100% of the existing building, fully remodeled, for Hatch to have an incubator in. And if you go back to 44,000 square feet, kind of do that math, that puts you in the realm of $9 million. And the other part is, the HUD dollars have been a little bit difficult to manage. We are hung up, as I said, in historical preservation. We're working through that. And we have a pretty aggressive timeline that we have to meet. And so, that's one of the reasons we're presenting the night, because the architects can't get busy on the first phase of the project until the council is comfortable with what is being projected. And again, I'll remind you that we are under obligation to the grant on EDA to have a notice to proceed issued to a general contractor to start the work no later than July 6, 2024. And we have to have it all complete, ready to turn the keys over to our tenant no later than May 6, 2026. And even though that sounds like a long ways away, it's really not. So, that is kind of how we got to this point. At this time, I'm going to introduce and ask Nicholas Gray, architect, who's working on the actual K-1 Hatch, to kind of walk you through how, some of the details of which we determined to make this recommendation. Thank you. Nick?
Yeah, that works. Thank you, Richard. Good evening, Council. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to show you our current progress for the K-1 Center, and to find to you a little bit more, yeah, a little bit more what Richard was speaking of. You know, when we began our investigation and the preliminary design process, one keynote stood out to our team, and it was that the historical precedence of the K-1 Center must be retained. As you'll see in some of these slides that we're going to look at, especially this elevation that we're looking at right now, we've attempted to do just that by refreshing and bringing new life to the existing K-1 facility, eliminating some of its problematic areas that Richard mentioned in his summary, but then maintaining the historic view from Church Street. If you'll take a look, the top elevation is the existing elevation drawings. And then, the center is the areas that we're proposing to demolish. The center portion here would be the gable roof that you see of the gymnasium in the background, the smokestack from the current mechanical system, and then an old chimney. If you walk along Church Street, you actually don't even notice the smokestack. I think it's been removed down to a smaller stack than what's shown here. The chimney, you can barely see over the top of the roof, as is. With the west, southwest corner of this facility here, or this wing here, this is the side Richard was talking about, has a flat roof. It's a mechanical access on it right now. It hasn't been used for mechanical equipment, but at one time, it was. There's two different roofing materials up there. There's a low-slope TPO-type membrane, and then an asphalt shingle roof. It's definitely an add-on, and something that's not historical to the building. And it's got a lot of issues with it. It's been leaking for a while, which also causes, I mean, it causes a lot of problems for the main floor, but it causes a lot of problems for the structure within that ceiling, and then also the basement underneath. As Richard mentioned, in that area, we noticed after the abatement process that it was a little worse than what it was. I was telling Rebecca a little bit earlier, that some of the glue that was holding it together was the actual finished materials, the plywood and things like that, that had the asbestos material on it that they had to remove from the abatement process, was actually holding some of the floor joists that are failing structurally together. They removed that during the abatement process, so now we've got a little bit more structural problems that we didn't notice until the abatement happened. So, that kind of further helps our point of getting rid of some of the problematic areas that would cost you a lot more to refine. We were looking at the gym area, and as Richard mentioned, one of the things that, okay, one of the things we were talking about with the gym area is, currently, it really confines the site, if you will. There's not a lot of, not a lot of freedom for daylighting of the two wings, the north and south wing, but also, the use of the space. Finding a programmatic area that would fit inside is a little bit complicated for Hatch. They didn't have a space that would really fit that space. So, the city looked to see if they can find something that would fit there. You guys have mentioned that you want a performing arts center. One of the things that has been mentioned is, you know, a 1,000 to 1,200-person seating. We ran some calculations, and the space would not hold 1,000 to 1,200-person seating, with all of the extra accompaniment.
It's also, there's an additional challenge, just to jump in, that as you can see, this is sort of to, an E shape, if you will.
That's right.
So, you not only have banks of windows facing each other, so your view is of another bank of windows, but you have huge expanses of roof draining towards each other, and they're also draining towards an entrance to a basement. So, you know, it's something that was managed at one time, when the building was in good repair, but has been unmanaged for a long time.
Right.
So, by removing that area, it's much simpler, and more straightforward, and less costly to manage the stormwater coming off of the roof. You've got more space to do it and to take it to daylight.
Yeah, one of the things that we'll notice whenever, whenever we get past, to the next slide, you'll notice that it really opens up the site by removing the gym, and though, yeah, by removing the gym and the west wing, you'll notice that it really opens up the site for future use, with whatever the city would like to do. You know, you've got a grand scheme for the entire complex, the entire site, and I think removing these two portions of the existing K-1 facility maintains the historical precedence, it maintains the look of the facility, but it really opens up the site for the uses that it needs.
Do you want to, there were a few more before we got into that. Do you want to go through this before?
Oh, yeah. So, here's the other elevation from the, I'm sorry, here's the other elevation from the south. You'll see, this is the portion of the gym behind that's going to be removed, and then here's the southwest wing that will be removed with the basement below. And this would be cut off at the same distance as the north wing. And the new roof would be, we would eliminate the flat portion of the roof and put a gable end on the top, so that it matches the same profile as what's existing on the rest of the facility. We'll replace it with a new architectural shingle that matches the historical precedence of the time. And like Richard says, we would take out, if you see in these drawings here, this was from a refurbishment, and these are old 3x5 windows that were infilled, so they're not the original windows. It doesn't allow for a lot of daylighting, but we would remove these and put architectural windows back that are similar to the original architectural intent.
So, we hopped around a little bit, which is my fault for interjecting on the stormwater, but my name is Rebecca Bryant. I'm the principal of Watershed. We partnered with Thompson Watermark, Watermark Watershed, confuses folks, to work on the master planning, which really, you know, master planning may be a little, may not be exactly the right word, because you're not starting with a blank slate. You're taking some existing structures and some dreams for new ones, and trying to weave them together. So, to start from the beginning, we're looking at how to tie together the existing historic structure to House Center for Technology and Entrepreneurial Development with, you know, this funny piece of land that is, well, the hatch in the nest, which coincidentally have, seem to work together. But FIFES Nest Facility adjacent to the hatch also houses, as you know, a marine science lab, an outdoor classroom, and will house in a future phase an innovation center. And so, how can we tie these together into a coherent campus, along with the dream of a future performing arts center, and the infrastructure needed to provide for circulation through the site to all of these areas, for parking, for the people using these facilities, for management of the stormwater coming off of these buildings? And how to tie that into the fabric of downtown? Because this isn't, you know, used-to-be, sort of the heart of downtown, all the kids coming to and from the K-1 Center. We've got all these exciting uses planned. It really can be, you know, the heart again. So, to kind of walk through what you're looking at here, we looked at several versions of where a performing arts center might, well, let me walk through everything else first and end up with that. How about that? So, we're looking at a landscaped entry, and again, this is a snapshot of our work. So, we're proposing a landscaped entry plaza for Hatch, wider than what's, right now, you just have kind of a functional sidewalk leading to the entry. So, really enlivening that, obviously, we've got the Magnolia that everyone loves there, so being super careful around that, and creating a new sort of entry courtyard that connects the Future Innovation Center for STEAM with FIFES with the Hatch Innovation Center, and sort of ties them together with a landscaped outdoor space. We're also sort of indicating future landscaped pathways moving through the site and connecting to a courtyard within the K-1 now that, with the proposed removal of the gym, that could house events. FIFES Campus, it's worth mentioning, is all about demonstrating, they have bio swales. I don't know how familiar y'all are with it, but there's rainwater collection to flush the toilets and to irrigate. So, they're demonstrating native plants in the landscaping, demonstrating water conservation and sort of practices that the city would like to see more of. They're also demonstrating low-impact development with a bio swale and songbird sanctuary, several rain gardens. And there's a proposal for them to take the water off of the K-1 Center in their future plans, and absorb that in a pond that would beautify the face of the Pelican's Nest facing Summit, and sort of make that more welcoming towards the street. So, this oddly-shaped line is the limit of FIFES lease. There's space that is still, you know, city-controlled on the corner of St. James and Summit, which we showed a low-impact development. What we've heard people sort of want and discuss is a low-impact development parking area, surface parking, similar to what's over on Magnolia, that could be, you know, vendor stalls, it could be farmer's market, you know, arts and crafts stalls, that sort of parking space. It has landscaping, stormwater management, and is an active space, not just a kind of a sea of concrete. That feels like it'd be very appropriate to the site. We then looked at, how do you fit, you know, for one thing, how large is the footprint of a performing arts center? And again, this is not, this is not the result of a design, for one. This is merely precedent research. We looked at facilities you guys are familiar with, like the Sanger Mobile, the Sanger in Pensacola, oh, I'll get to that, and, well, and the University of South Alabama's Performance Center across the street. And some, we also looked at Daphne's Civic Center. So, the 27,000-square-foot footprint here is sort of representative of the tiered seating theaters that we looked at, that housed, that actually housed closer to 1,900 seats. So, more than the 1,000 to 1,200 that you guys are talking about. We looked at two or three different options that tucked it behind the K-1 Center, because that's what we've heard people talking about for so long. The challenges there were access. You know, it started to feel like you had to walk through the campus, or kind of come down on Summit and then come in, in order to get into it. The necessary square footage really took up most of that space, and the height, you know, a fly loft, you need 50 feet clear. So, that's, you're looking at a roof that's 10 feet higher than the tallest part of the peak of the K-1 Center, which is not too intrusive from church, but it's pretty big on Summit, and it's even more big when it's next to the little Pelican's Nest by the bay. It's kind of like up, if you saw that movie. But more than that, it just didn't feel like it had a face. If Hatch, you know, Hatch is planned to be fully occupied, how do you carve a space through a leased facility and say the public comes through here? So, when we flipped it around and looked at, well, and the other issue was, if the only place for the parking then becomes this corner on Summit and St. James? So, if you put a parking lot on that public corner in the middle of downtown, you know, instead of public facilities that activate the street, you've got parking deck exposed on maybe three sides. So, when we went through all those different options with the committee, we ended up wanting to show you this one, which showed space for a performing arts center, where that surface parking is now, on the, sort of abutting the gully, but not really pushing up against it, where it gives you the opportunity to have a covered drop-off area for performing arts. It also gives you a lot more flexibility about the size of the facility. I mean, as I mentioned, this square is what 27,000 square foot looks like. That's like a little bigger than the Sanger Mobile. And that's more people than you guys have said you wanted to have. We only showed this larger footprint, because that's what the Daphne Civic Center looks like in a footprint, if you take out the breakout conference rooms. And it's just the not-tiered seating, flat area. But when we located it here, it gave you the opportunity, it started to sort of create a space, where you might be, you know, attract festivals. And the Film Festival already happens at South, as you were mentioning. You could see, you know, something happening there, something happening in a future performing arts center, you know, stalls in the surface parking, and Hatch, you know, you could have, host the Solar Decathlon, or, you know, science, arts festivals, science festivals. So, it just felt like there were more opportunities and a little more flexibility, looking at it in this way. We also just wanted to point out, in the spirit of, you know, parking decks might be best not as street frontage, that this size of a parking deck is just taken from the existing city parking deck, and it happens to fit in the surface parking lot behind the Fairhope Inn and the Fairhope Community Park. So, just for future thoughts and planning, we wanted to kind of show that. A 1,200-seat performing arts center would need 300 parking spaces. So, just, and again, in the CBD, you're actually not, by zoning required to provide those, but there's only so much squeezing you can do. So, we were trying to show all the opportunities. Structured parking and surface parking would satisfy that in this option.
And a portion of what you're going to want to do to help facilitate Hatch, I think, too, is Hatch is going to have, you know, certain parking requirements and things for their facility, and, you know, has an incubation space with all of the people and persons that are coming into that space, and the new businesses that are starting that Fairhope wants to see flourish. I mean, that's a portion of why they're going to need some parking, those close by also, I think.
Well, that's a good point. Again, it's the CBD, and Hatch is not, the grant doesn't provide for the provision of parking. It's not proposed, and it's not required, but if you were in a different area that required it, the amount that they would require would be satisfied by this surfing, surface parking lot and the one across the street. That would cover it.
Yeah.
So, just to, just for a sense of scale and planning.
Yeah.
So, that, we also, I guess, just to address this, and again, I'm showing things that are outside, just to be very clear to anybody listening in from outside, we're showing a lot of things that are not currently proposed, they're not currently designed, and they're not currently funded. It was just our job to work with the plans for the K-1 and make sure they allowed for the greatest flexibility for these things to happen in the future. So, we're not proposing this. But if you were to tuck structured parking behind the K-1 Center, it would actually be shorter than a performing arts center. It would tuck behind it. There is 16 feet of drop from Church to Summit, so you have a little help with the topography, and then with the fact that you don't have a roof on it. But we could fit, this is the size of the current city structured parking lot. It could fit there with- It could fit there with some room for, it would need buffering, I would think. So you could have landscape buffering or facade buffering. And one thing that we've been, that we've been discussing is there would be an opportunity to create balconies or staging or something facing the parking lot, I mean, the parking lot, facing the courtyard, that would screen the parking lot and be an amenity to the courtyard, you know, on that facade. So we just covered a lot, but would love to hear your questions and thoughts.
Start with you, Jack.
You sure you've got enough time to start with me? Let, let's talk about what, what is the most pressing, and that's, that's the Hatch plan. And Liam, I'm glad to see you here tonight, sir. And it's an exciting, exciting time. And thank you for all your work on this, from the architects as well. So I, I want to start by saying that the Hatch plan itself, you know, I guess you swallow the part, you lose a part of the south wing and, you know, you hate to lose that, but it probably, your ROI is just probably not there to try to salvage that. And, you know, you talk a lot about symmetry and that, that makes a lot of sense, too. I like, I like symmetry in my architecture, personal preference. So as far as the Hatch plan goes, which is what we need to settle on, I, I like it. I really do. I also listened very intently to what you said about the performing arts center. You know, for years and years, we've talked about putting it where the gymnasium is. And we probably need to have a healthy debate as to whether we're looking at 1,000 or 1,200 or 1,900 or 800. I mean, I've heard every number that you can possibly throw out between 750 and probably 2,500. But for tonight, I don't think that that affects the Hatch plan. So I like the Hatch plan. I like the fact that, you know, it is nice to have that open courtyard. And the fact that that would have to be demolished completely, probably, you're not saving money by trying to protect that. You're going to have to have a standalone, whether you went in that courtyard or whether you, wherever you put the performing arts center, you're going to have a complete standalone structure, right? So you're not saving anything by doing that. So Hatch plan looks great. The, I'll talk just a minute about the, the site plan because, you know, first pill I had to swallow was, you know, the performing arts center not being in that courtyard. And I've, I've sat up here and struggled with that, but you made a lot of, of good sense tonight. Once again, I think there needs to be the debate whether, what size it is, if you put it to the rear of the property across Summit. I also, I'd always envisioned that parking deck being about where you had that 42,000 square foot. So we can sleep on that and think about that, but you made a lot of sense about, you know, tucking it behind that building. I would also ask the question, do you need, you said you need 300 spaces for 1,200 seats. And we've talked a lot about when you have an event there, if it's in the evening or on the weekend, you know, we do have another parking deck that's, I know nobody wants to walk more than 20 feet in Fairhope, but you know, it's still a very, very short walk from our parking deck to this facility. We have arts and crafts that attracts 300,000 people a year over three days. So 100,000 people are finding a place to park somewhere. And I'm not saying that they would have to walk as far as Kevin Boone's driveway, which is where I park. But 1,200 is a lot different than 1,000 or 1,200 or 1,500. So I think that, you know, we can debate that in the future. It may not have to be quite that big. I worry, I also am thinking about cost. So whether it's 230 or 130 or 100, we can probably talk about all that. But in, in principle, I like your thoughts about, around where you put that. And you made a lot of sense about, you know, putting the performing arts center back there. We can debate those, the merits of size later. So overall, I, I'd give you all an A+ on that. Thank you all for all the work. And the committee, whomever served on that committee, I'm kind of jealous I'd like to have been on that, but, uh, great, great work on that. Were you on that, Mayor?
I was there. Kevin also wrote that.
Kevin.
Booney, you were on that?
I may have misspoken by calling it a committee.
That's all, that's all, Council President.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Corey?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. So are you proposing that we have two parking decks? Is that what I'm saying, or are you giving us options here?
That was giving you options. And, and all of them are options. Yes. That would be more than you would need even for the larger performing arts center.
My, my understanding is that second sort of floating deck out here is just showing that our current, the size of our current parking deck would fit into what that current parking lot exists right now.
Right. It is actually located over it, if you can kind of see the, the grayed-out map in the background.
Okay. So that would be the parking lot that's lateral to the playground.
Exactly.
Just drop that, superimpose that.
Yeah, this is the Fairhope Inn and.
Very good. And, and the option here was to have a 27, or options-wise, was 27,000 versus 42,000? Is that right?
We, we were, I don't think you really want a 42,000, but we wanted to show, it's, it's really the difference between a tiered seating and a, a flat exhibit area. And it, I figured everyone was familiar with Daphne's Civic Center. And so this is actually a little smaller because we cut out the education spaces. So it's more of a suburban model because, you know, where, if you had unlimited space, I don't think you want to do that, but we, I tried to use things you were familiar with.
I like the tiered seating, yeah. If it's a performing arts, I would like the tiered seating. Yeah. I, I, I do like, what I want to point out is I like the, the reclamation or reclaiming of the fluids or the water or the hydration and with the kids learning how to do that, making this pond. I think Upphorns does a good job with that. So us coming up to, to contemporary times by teaching the kids how to kind of conserve water and, and, and be thoughtful of that, I, I really like that idea. So, you know, you get kudos for that.
They're having a, they're actually teaching right now, they have sort of before and after or the old way and the new way, because there's the old concrete flumes that took the stormwater off the site, that sort of concentrated it and make it go faster and cause erosion. And then right next to that, they have a bio swale. So they're getting to show kids, this is how we used to do it, and now that we know better, here's how we do it now. So it's, you know, the old way's been kind of educational for a lot of kids.
All this is very exciting, Rebecca. I think y'all did an excellent job. You know, we just go from here and talk about monies.
That's right. It's the hard part.
All right. Mr. Conyers?
I'm just excited to see us taking the next step. I mean, these projects have moved slowly and, and, you know, you want, you want to keep momentum, but I, I think the plan particularly related to Hatch Park's great. And I, kind of with Councilman Burrell, I think you can have some discussion on the parking deck and the performing arts center. And I think we just need to all sit down and figure out where's the best spot, but those two could be interchangeable or maybe move slightly. But in general, I like the, the concept of, of the site plan. And I do think the proposal on Hatch and, you know, eliminating the parts of the building that are just not really going to be.
They're problematic.
Yeah, they're already problematic and you're just not going to get enough return on investment for what it would take to get them corrected. So I think y'all have done a good job. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Kevin?
I want to keep it short. I'm very well pleased with the bottom line. I enjoy, I like the sound factor. I've been kind of concerned about the problems we're going to have fixing up, what I call the crumminess, if I can use a better word. Really, and what y'all have provided here, I think is an excellent idea as far as saving money overall as a part, as opposed to trying to reclaim it. It's been a lot of money, I don't think, do you think that we're going to necessarily need. So I think this is very well done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boone. From my standpoint, you know, I think when you look at the front, proposed modifications, the, the opportunity to, again, preserve the facade of that building, to, to maintain the historic significance of it, it obviously looks like you guys have done a great job here. But am I the only one that has heartburn about tearing down what might be a perfectly good basketball gym? I mean, we've got such a need for that. It is pretty, I mean, knowing how bad we need gyms right now in the city of Fairhope for our youth sports, the, the idea of just tearing one down hurts my feelings a little bit.
It's in pretty rough shape, sir.
You don't have to call me sir.
Nick, I'll take this one. As, as the immediate past chair of the Fairhope Youth Basketball Organization, you wouldn't want your kids or my kids playing in that gym.
That's what I needed to hear. That's what I, that's what I needed to hear. All right. Enough, enough said, enough said. But overall, guys, I mean, I do think this is, this is, you know, it, it does look really And just figuring out sort of, thank you for giving the ideas of sort of future layout because it's obviously something that we've got to keep in mind in, in however we ended up setting this up. But, but I think overall, this looks great. I do appreciate it, and I think you guys have done a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, I do think people would be shocked if they walked through the K-1 now, people who are imagining it what it was when our kids went there, at how much damage that water has done over the years. And just glad we're doing something now before it's, before there's nothing left that could be saved.
I'm just envisioning this, you know, old-school Hoosier-style gym back there that, that's shiny and looks great and ready for kids to go in there and start playing. That's not what I'm.
Then we'll get you back to reality.
So we even did, you know, back in 2019, we, we did the assessment for K-1 Center for you guys. And from 2019 to today, to 2023, there's been some significant changes because of, you know, existing conditions that needed to be repaired with the roof and long-term moisture damage that's come through, especially in the two areas that we're talking about demoing, in the gymnasium and in that southwest portion of the wing. So, I mean, just in that short four to five years, seeing the amount of damage and the amount of structural damage that it's caused, there are trusses within the gym that are completely shot. We'd have to reroute the entire thing, not just a cosmetic reroute, but new, new structural image, new structural in the place. So, I mean, and because it has a basement, it has leaked into the floor, causing more floor joists, which are ceiling joists for the basement floor. That was an old kitchen, so there's a lot of inherent problems with that, too. So, I mean, it, there's a lot of things that we eliminate whenever we get rid of the gym that will not, you know, I, I think it will only help, you know, for better use of the site.
Maybe better spin it than 120.
Please, come on, Lee, thank you.
Just real quick, I want to thank Nick, Rebecca, their team, but also want to thank Mayor Sullivan, Councilman Boone for kind of leaning in. We've got to see a few examples, and we're going to continue kind of our market research on existing tech accelerators and incubators that we're trying to mirror and mimic with, with this facility. And Richard and the, the team at the city, I know, have spent a lot of time and effort on this. It's not, anytime you get federal money, right, Jack, it's never free, right? They always tell you, you know, it's, it's matching pennies on the dollar, right? But the timeline, the requirements and all the things that the team has had to go through and do, and, and just want to commend them again, Councilman Boone and Mayor, for really taking this on. And from the, from the first day that we said, hey, we're going to do this, and, and we, we got acceptance through the EDA, the goal was to make sure that the historic preservation of this building mirrored what the plan for, for Hatch was. And I think we've been able to make that marry up, and that's been at the forefront of everybody's mind, has been, how do we make sure that what the community wants to see preserved and done marries up with what, A, the money we have, B, the budget, and B, the plan for what Hatch can utilize from, you know, really harnessing and fostering entrepreneurship. And so we think we've done that with the team, and so we look forward to get started. Thank you for your support and your leadership on this. It's been a long ride. I'm ready to see it get going. So thank you.
Thank you, Lee. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
All right, guys, moving on. Mayor, do we have anybody here that's going to discuss the gas tax? I, I know we have. Can we, can we skip that for now and go to PFM? I just want to give them the opportunity, since they're here, and I'm assuming they're here, right? Just to make sure we don't ignore anybody that's here presently without sitting around waiting up, watching us talk about other things. So let's go ahead and move to number three, to the introduction to PFM Financial Advisors LLC.
So our, our last council meeting, we discussed about a financial advisor. And so I've invited, and we put on the agenda for a PFM. I have worked with them in the past, and so I'm very familiar with them. So I just want to introduce Josh and Marcy, and so they can take it.
Thank you, Kim. Thank you for moving us up, although Marcy is heading back to Huntsville tonight, I'm staying the night, so I'm sure Marcy will appreciate that. Are we driving here or everyone's just have a hard copy in front of them?
Yep.
Okay, great. So just a quick introduction of the team on slide two of the book in front of you. Again, my name is Joshua McCoy, I'm the Managing Director at PFM Financial Advisors, based out of Huntsville. Been with the firm since I started my career, born and raised in Mobile, so I am fairly familiar with the Fairhope area. Marcy Lewis?
Yeah, I'm Marcy Lewis. I'm born and raised in Huntsville and have been doing this work for 23 years. Our firm, who is based out of Huntsville, merged with PFM about 11 years ago in 2021. We were a small boutique financial advisory firm that was formed around 2001. And we saw the opportunities that it brought us to, to merge with the large firm with those national resources. So that'll take us to the next slide. This is what really brought our, our firm to, to want to merge with PFM. While we, we liked having our Alabama resources and our Alabama clients, we liked that, that PFM brought a national scope of resources to us, that, that we were able to pull from and, and learn from. PFM's been around for a little over 40 years. They were formed just to be a financial advisor, a fiduciary to our clients. We don't buy ourselves bonds, we are not underwriters. We only work to advise our state and local government clients and have been ranked number one in the country since 1998. And in a variety of, of roles as well. So we have 31 locations across the United States, with one of our offices being in Huntsville. So we consider ourselves kind of the Alabama part of the practice. We took the firm that was already serving the state of Alabama and just beefed up the resources by having those, those national resources of, of folks that have worked in multiple different industries and with multiple different types of clients. In Huntsville, we work very closely with also our Memphis and Atlanta offices to serve the mid-south as a whole. We meet regularly to kind of discuss what we're doing among each other's clients and, and help out how we're doing. But Josh and I are based in the Huntsville office. So just a little bit more on our Alabama practice. We've been providing advice since 2001. I've been with the firm, been, been doing this since 2000. And we have worked on over 60 transactions for $6 billion since 2017. This is just a small list of clients across the state of Alabama that we've worked with in the past and some that we're currently working with. I know when we first decided to, to branch off from being municipal underwriters to being municipal advisors, University of Alabama Huntsville and City of Huntsville were our, were our flagship clients that we still maintain today. We did work with the City of Fairhope in 2020, running some numbers on the, the deal that you did then, was 2020, right? And, and, and we've done, worked with Huntsville Utilities for a good number of years, as well as Gulf Shores Utilities, Auburn Water Works Board is part of our contract with the City of Auburn. So we feel that we are really well-positioned to serve all the local municipalities that, that need our kind of services in Alabama.
You turn this thing to slide six or 14 here, it looks like, on the screen. In addition to our local Alabama practice, we maintain the national water and wastewater practice. So not only are Marcy and I able to pull from our local experience and expertise serving other cities across the state that have, you know, where we've worked on utility deals, but we have the breadth and depth of the national practice and firm, where we get the benefit of working with dozens of other project managers that also work on utility financings, whether it be gas, water, sewer, or combined utility. So that allows us to better understand the market, pull in experts that are also prior CFOs of utility systems, rating analysts that focus on the utility sector, and best advise our clients as to the market and, as well as the covenants at which you would enter into with. into with, whether it be a bank or public markets with bondholders. So, just last year alone, within the water and sewer practice you see here on the screen and in front of you, that, you know, we advise on 63 transactions nationally totaling close to 5.7 billion or over 5.7 billion in debt. In terms of addressing this requested scope of work from council, we have had the opportunity to sit down or meet virtually with Kim and Mayor Sullivan to kind of walk through the issues that you currently face in terms of capital needs, projects that are currently ongoing, and the need to access capital markets, whether that be in the form of a bank loan or a line-of-credit type product, which was discussed at the last meeting, versus doing a larger financing and going and maybe tapping the markets in a different direction. So, our approach, first and foremost, starts with getting to know our client as a fiduciary. It's a requirement under MSRB, and part of that is addressing and working with you to identify your financing goals and objectives, as well as understanding the current borrowing covenants and covenants that you have with your current bondholder, being Regions Bank. So, we've already started digging into that a little bit. We know your bond attorney very well. At Kane Burnett, at Bradley, we work with the Bradley firm on a lot of other clients across the state. So, the first and foremost is identifying those goals and objectives, and then also understanding your risk tolerance, to then come back to you with a plan of finance that meets those objectives and is within your risk profile. And better than that is also understanding your debt capacity. What can you afford under your bond covenants? What can you afford on your cash flows? And then also understanding future cash flows, whether it's population growth or demand studies, and figuring out, you know, if there's rate increases proposed down the line, what that might look like in terms of additional revenues to service debt. On the risk exposure side, we want to understand what your tolerance is for fixed versus variable rate risk, put obligations like an LLC where you would have risk of converting that to either long-term debt or potentially paying that off with cash. And then, understanding also efficiencies in regards to financing in multiple phases or tranches, or doing one lump-sum financing to save efficiencies on cost of issuance. And we think about all that holistically with the current market conditions, as well as expectations for future rate increases, to then provide you a plan of finance that we would recommend. So, I'll pause there and see if there's any questions as to kind of our philosophy and mindset and how we would approach this scope of work. So, kind of going around the wheel as to, you know, why we think PFM's a good fit. First and foremost, we believe our Alabama experience and our local presence sets us apart from other advisors or investment banks. We take a very holistic approach of not just a cookie-cutter approach, but really digging into financials, risk tolerances, and your financing goals to deliver a very specific plan of finance. All that is embedded with our technical capabilities and our resources across the firm. So, we didn't speak about this earlier, but also at the firm, you know, given the national footprint, you know, we have dedicated quantitative resources, a national quantitative strategies group, which we've used to, as we think through credit, build out credit scorecard models. We have a dedicated pricing group. So, for any of our clients that are accessing the capital markets via public financing, so, versus your previous financing where you went a bank RFP route, if you were to tap into the capital markets by hiring an investment banker to do an underwriting, we sit at your side of the table and work with our pricing group to negotiate those yields to ensure that you're getting competitive and fair pricing. Also, the credit side, knowing and understanding the methodologies that Moody's, S&amp;P, and Fitch use for rating revenue, back financing, or GO, if you were to go that route, we would be there to assist in advising and getting you the highest rating that we could. In addition, our bank placement group, while we're not a broker-dealer, we do often work with our clients on advising them on accessing the capital markets via bank placement. We just took bids last week for City of Huntsville on 15- and 20-year structures. And so, we have and maintain a very robust network of banks that participate in the Alabama market, that we would then work with Kane and the team here on making sure that any RFP or distribution of banks was widely distributed, and also help with the marketing side to make sure there was no credit questions or legal questions from the banking side to ensure that you're getting broad participation in competitive bid results. Any questions?
Yep, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Are we on that? Hang on a second. I'll wait till the next slide.
Yeah. So, fee proposal to handle that scope of work. You know, we've, we're really agnostic as to the approach at which our clients engage us. So, across the state, we do have clients that are, we're on retainer, on an annual retainer that has a transaction component. And we also have clients that pay us just one-time engagements and others that are on hourly arrangements, depending on structure and scope of work. So, we have put into options for consideration in that. The option on the left is just a one-time engagement to handle the requested scope of work on addressing a plan of finance. Should you like to engage the firm to assist on the transaction execution, we would propose a transaction-based fee and would credit all the work under Phase 1 of the plan of finance for that. The option under the retainer, it's a quarterly, we generally do quarterly billing on the retainer, and under that option, would have a lower transaction fee component, given the fact that, you know, we're working with you more routinely, and there's less kind of get-up-to-speed-type things in regards to executing on a plan of finance.
And the retainer would be comprehensive for the city. It would be, the engagement would be with the City of Fairhope, so it wouldn't just be related to water projects. It would be, if Kim has a question about something related to electric or sewer or general city finance-related, she would be able to give, pick up the phone and give us a call and get that assistance without worrying about, you know, getting charged an hourly fee or something like that. It would be fully comprehensive.
Yeah, that's, thank you, Marcy, for raising that. Within the back of the book, we do have some slides on additional scope of services that are beyond just a traditional plan of finance. So, a lot of those services would entail, like, working on an annual capital improvement plan. So, the best practice that we work with clients on is developing five- or 10-year capital improvement plans, and then helping our clients manage that on an annual basis. So, those are things that fall into more retainer-type scope of work versus a one-off plan of finance that would be available under that option. To kind of put a little bit more meat on the fee proposal and how that really works, we provided some sample calculations here based on some of the numbers that were discussed at the last council meeting. A 15 million, or, I'm sorry, a $25 million financing would receive a discount if issued as a bank loan versus a public markets. The reason for that is that there's really less work for us to do, and the fact that you don't have to go get ratings from the rating agencies, as well as putting together an offering document to the market. So, there's less time and hours. So, under a bank loan, you know, we would have the plan of finance at 15,000 if executed, if asked to participate on the transaction, it would hit our fee minimums at 30,000, less which would be inclusive of the fee credit assigned to that. At 25 million, again, for a bank loan, you hit the fee minimums, and then anything over that, you, over 30 million under a one-time plan of finance, you would start hitting the transaction fee north of 30 million. So, at 45 million for a bank loan, you would have the transaction-based fee less the discount for the plan of finance. To give some perspective on fees and value add, looking at various transaction sizes, we ran some preliminary numbers as just to what the value of a basis point is. So, a basis point is .01%. If we were looking at a 15-year borrow, for instance, between 30 and 45 million, the value of a basis point is anywhere, is between, call it 22,000 and 33,000. So, what that means to you is if we can save you with our plan of finance recommendation in negotiating with either banks or investors in the public market, .01% on your borrowing rate, then we're saving you, call it 25 grand. So, between one and two basis points is the break-even, and where we would add, anything over that is where we're adding value to you all in terms of your cost of funds. On a letter-of-credit-type structure, because the duration is so much shorter, the value of a basis point is lower, and that's between 15 and 20 grand. So, your break-even maybe goes to two to three basis points. Again, that's .02 to .03%. And so, on a cost of funds, if you were looking at 4%, we would need to get you to 3.97 to be adding value to your structure and plan of finance. That gets in the weeds of the math, but hopefully that's a good way to visualize the value add.
Counsel President, can I ask a question now?
You may.
So, I just want to be clear, on this chart, the annual total, the 30,000, in your examples, the 30,000, or the 38, or the 45, that is an annual amount that we pay over the life of the?
No, that's, I'm sorry, that's one-time. So, on 25 million to 30 million dollar bank loan, it would be a one-time fee of 30,000. One and done. You know, if you hired us in five years to renegotiate it or refinance, there'd be another fee, a one-time fee proposal.
It says annual total, that kind of stuff.
Yeah, sorry, I was trying to compare year-one annual total to a one-time engagement versus a one-year total to the retainer, so you could see the value between...
That's a lot better.
A one-time, yeah, sorry about that. So, you can see the value between a one-time engagement versus the retainer base, so you can see, like, if our retainer fees, on average, for a lot of clients across the state, we're anywhere from, call it, I think, 16 grand to 45 grand on retainer fees. And so, in the first year with a transaction, you're really getting a lot of value in the additional scope of services because you're doing a transaction. So, that's why we're just trying to show the comparison, sorry about that.
So, let me ask you a tough question, and I know that you won't say that every single time you can do this, but let's say you're working with Huntsville Utilities or the City of Huntsville, or Mobile, or whomever, and you're going to try and negotiate a rate at a local bank. You know, the politicians, the staff are going to say, well, we live here, we work with those, we bank with these banks. How can you get us a better rate than we can get ourselves? Because we live in the community.
Yeah, it's a...
How do you answer that?
That's a very good question, and so, first of all, our advice would start on determining where we see the market for a bank product versus a public markets financing, and telling you, okay, well, and recommending which product is better over the other. So, in the current market, for instance, tax-exempt rates versus taxable rates, the ratios are very, very rich, meaning, so like on a 10-year, a 10-year spot rate, for instance, tax-exempt rates are roughly 65% of that of taxable rates. Well, bank lending is, their cost of funds is largely driven off the treasury curve, and at a tax-exempt implied benefit of 21%, you're not going to get, it's hard for banks to compete versus public markets. So, delivering that recommendation as to one over the other is where we can save value versus just going to the bank markets. To address your specific question on the bank side, generally speaking, in the current market, banks' cost of funds are challenging for one, and two, they're really nervous about lending, given the inverted yield curve and the prospects of a recession. So, where our value comes in is if it's not working with a local bank, it's identifying banks that have lower cost of funds that maybe are willing to come in and invest in this community, even though they may not have a local branch. So, that's not always the case, where you have a really good relationship with whoever has your deposits, for instance, is generally a good place to start. But some of those banks, particularly Alabama banks right now, you know, they're scared to lend, and so part of our job is talking to them about credit and, you know, seeing if there's other things that we could provide to them or the city could provide to them to entice them to come in at a competitive rate, and then just, you know, chatting with other banks to try to get bids in and make it a competitive process.
We put a lot of our borrowing out for bid, and I guess, you know, we've always gone with the lowest bid. We can negotiate from that point.
And we, yeah, and we, we have a very broad list of banks that are bidding on debt throughout the state, so it may not be a local bank to Fairhope that comes in and has the lowest bid. And so, typically, what we do is work with bond counsel to draft the RFP, make sure that it has everything that it needs, and then when the banks get it from us, they know that it's gone to 20 other banks, and that they better be, sharpen their pencil a little bit, because it's not just going to this smaller group, it's going to this broader group.
Y'all got a list of contractors like that we can borrow to?
I wish.
That's a great question.
Thank you. All right, counsel, any other questions for now?
Kim, have you given any thought to whether you would be thinking a one-time engagement or a retainer arrangement is more appropriate?
Well, I like the retainer, because there's other things they would be able to do for us, to look at some capital planning in, under the general government. I mean, y'all have a lot of other things I know y'all have on y'all's list, and those are things that they can be working on, some five-year plans of capital. Also, you know, we have our utility superintendents put a five-year plan together, but that's something they can, they can also look at that. We're currently having a rate study done, that's something that they can also look into, evaluate those two, because, you know, they, that's what, that's the other piece that they look at. So, that's just me. I think there's some more projects that can be done, just being able to have them on retainer. And even, at least in looking at some of the investments, they can look at the investment side, too. You know, we've got the reserves sitting here, but, you know, is there some other options?
Okay. Counsel, any additional questions for these guys at this time? No? Thank you guys so much for coming.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, let's move on. We'll go back to number two, which is the discussion of gas tax.
Okay, on the gas, on gas tatts, you have in your packet listing the cities around us and, or in Baldwin County, so you can see what the local gas tatts. And just to make sure everybody understands, it's not a percent, it's per gallon. So, it's at the gas pump, it's going to be a per gallon, no matter what the price, price per gallon is, it's going to be three cents, or Daphne's one cent, Alberta's three cents, but it's per gallon, and Baldwin County's is five cents. And there's a map there that you can see each, each city, where they're located, and what their gas tatts is. And the gas tatts is restricted funds. If this is something that y'all choose to, it would go into a restricted fund that can be used for resurf... be used for resurfacing. There is some other broader areas that the act this past year, they, they've opened it up a little bit more of other things you can do with this money. But, you know, what I see, and Richard can stand up here to tell you the needs that we have on resurfacing roads in the city, we have, I believe he's got in this budget that we're working on, almost like 1.5 million in needed for resurfacing on roads. So didn't know if y'all have any more questions on this.
Kim, am I reading this right, that other than Perdido Beach, we are the only city in Baldwin County that does not currently have a gas tax?
That is correct. That is correct.
What amount would y'all be thinking per gallon?
Four.
Four cents.
Four.
So city of Daphne has one cent, and mayor was able to confirm that they collected $215,000 with that one cent. Yeah, they have more gas stations. And if you think about the gas station outside of Walmart, that's on that property, that's is not in the city limits, so whatever your gas tax would be, it would be half. And then Lotsley, their three cents is 1.2 million that Lotsley collects on, in gas tatts.
Well, they do have Buc-Ee's, I mean, that's 100 pumps there, I'd say.
Yeah, it is.
Is that Lotsley?
Yes, that's Lotsley City.
Yeah, Lotsley, Lotsley came up to the other side of the interstate, so the interstate connected them to Buc-Ee's.
Yeah, they never do that. High volume, definitely high volume.
But if you had, if you had a gas tax, right now, we use some impact fee money for gas tatts, but the impact fee money can be used, diverted to other things, impact money could be used in for some drainage projects, sidewalks, so I know there's, there's always a lot of needs for sidewalks, so that would make, where we could take some of the impact fee money and divert it to other projects.
Yeah, it also can be converted to road construction, so...
Yeah.
What was that, Mayor?
The new act has some changes where it could be used for some police funding, the motorfield tax.
Traffic, traffic issues, those kind of things.
So it can be construction, not just resurfacing? I read construction.
Yes, in the, in the new act.
In the new act, I read road construction, so... So you gave us what Daphne gets with one, one penny, that was 250K was per year, right?
Yes.
Okay, do you have projections for what we would get? If they're not paying the tax, we may not know exactly how many gallons we're selling. Well, you could get it from Baldwin County, or you could get it from Baldwin County, what they're reporting, right? Within the municipal limits and in our police jurisdiction?
Yeah, so it's collected from the distributors, and it's going to give the zip code, I mean, that's where it's going to be from the zip code, so trying to go from the city limits, but, you know, we can gather an estimate, and that's one reason, it's kind of looking at Daphne where you are. You've got to think about, the gas station right there at Walmart has a lot of volume there, a lot of volume there, I, I mean, I can, I can get that number from Baldwin County, you know, specifically because that's on Murphy's, that comes from their distributor. But, you know, we can go by an estimate, you know, an estimate that this could be, if it's a two cent, it's, you know, it may be four, you know, 400,000 a year, having two cents there.
I mean, yeah, if you got, and if you get the numbers from Baldwin County for our area code, we can, we can extrapolate some number, we may, plus or minus 50 percent anyway, 40, 50 percent.
The way the, the way the new law reads, it says, "This act may be used only for the cost of administering the tax, cost of construction, reconstruction, maintenance, mass trap, mass transit, repair of the roads, bridges, rights of ways, cost of traffic regulation, and the cost of enforcing traffic and motor vehicle laws."
You have a copy of that in your agenda packet.
All right, well, Counsel, any, I mean...
Well, there's the other school of thought, that just because everybody's taxing doesn't mean you have to.
That's right.
There's also, you know, because every, Millis' rates vary throughout the entire state, I mean, there's lots of ways that, you know, it's easy to tax and spend, it's harder to be smart about and watch your spending and not tax people. I think that's, you know, the challenge, and while it looks like an easy grab, you know, and one thing, I talked to Kim about this last week, and one of the things she said is that, you know, if the gas stations want to remain competitive in the area, they can't always pass on costs, they have to keep their price low, so it may be that it doesn't hurt the consumer so much, that's, you know, that's something politically you have to think of, are you hurting your residents with another tax, and is that something they're willing to pay? We've got a pretty good surplus right now, I'm just, I'm a little, I'm a little iffy on it, to be honest.
Yeah, I don't think any tax, just for the sake of doing one, is really worthwhile, but I think, on the flip side of that, I mean, I think we have $900,000 on the agenda tonight in resurfacing projects, so to say that there's not a need, especially when you can funnel that money directly into projects like that, it's hard to ignore that. I don't know, Jack, I did, I kind of had the same reaction to you, it's just because we're the only one not doing it, doesn't mean we have to do it.
I mean, you know, we're going to always have needs, we can always pave another road, we can always widen a road, we can always add a sidewalk, I mean, there's, and maybe, you know, it's a, it's a small amount, and people won't get upset, but I just think generally, you know, more taxation, it's just, you know, our, our penny tax, we've added that, and first of all, you don't, you don't have to go back very far to where we added a sales tax, then we added a penny tax, and we had another penny tax, now there'd be a penny on gas, I mean, it's just, where does it end? Just for debate.
I think it's well-needed, in my opinion. We have places in our municipality that need roads, for instance, the airport, you know, the new road there, there's future, not just thinking about now, but in the future. What that does for us, as far as return on investment, that gives back to the community, gives back to the citizens, so it's almost like a push, we're talking about taxing people, then to give it back to them. So that's another side of that point that we haven't talked about. When you, when you invest in something like a tax, you're trying to see if you can get it back somehow to the public. You don't want to just tax people and not get it back, but in this situation, I believe, this tax will give back the community threefold, in my opinion.
Kevin, Jimmy, anything else to add?
No.
Like, Jack, I can argue both sides of this coin real good.
Kind of torn, too, for the same reasons, I mean. We do have the 900,000 on the agenda tonight for resurfacing, but...
Can we enact the gas tax only on people that don't live in Fairhope, that buy gas in Fairhope?
Show your ID.
Show your ID for your one cent. All right, thank you, Kim.
You're welcome.
All right, item number four is general government budget discussion and capital improvements. And Mayor, before we dive into that, I'm, let me interject something real quick, that's completely unrelated, but I want to bring to Counsel's attention. Counsel, we have, our Faro freshman and JV football team start playing on August the 28th, and obviously, they play on Monday nights, and I've got a child playing, Cory's got a child potentially playing in those games, Jimmy's got a daughter cheering at those games, and so what I would like is to consider, maybe for some of these dates, but especially this first one, just because it's the next meeting, is to consider moving some of those meetings to Tuesday night. You know, I know that just being up here and being on Counsel, there are things that we have to miss, that are just part of the job, and we accept that, but I think if you have the opportunity at minimum disruption to each other, but also to city staff, I think it's something worth entertaining, because even though there are things that we cannot, things that we cannot avoid, you know, if we can't avoid them, I'd like us, I'd like to see us try. And so anyway, I guess what I'm, what I'd ask you guys to do, at least tonight, is consider moving that next council meeting from August the 28th to Tuesday, August the 29th, and then that, that gives everybody the opportunity to look at their schedule for some of these other future, and I think there's only a handful, and whether or not each of you individually, maybe you're out of town those Tuesdays, maybe you've got work, maybe there's some other conflict you have, so instead of asking to do all of them tonight, that we at least consider moving that next one to Tuesday, August 29th. And I, and I've discussed this with the mayor about, you know, hopefully not imposing too much of a burden on staff, if it is moved from Monday to Tuesday night, she said you guys were happy to meet any night of the week.
Jay, what time's the game?
Five o'clock. They're, they're five, so freshmen start at five, and then JV is immediately after that, so you're talking five and probably seven, 7:30?
The reason I ask is, is like, I'm just talking, we're talking personal experience here. Monday's good, because if I travel, I'll wait till Tuesday, if you can't travel till Wednesday, your, your week's shot.
Well, and that's why...
And then we have, we start getting into other, if you, one time's fine, I have no problem with that, but you're going to start getting into, especially, that, that is the fifth week of the month, so we're really fortunate, we don't have a lot of committee meetings, but if it was the first, second, third week of the month, I mean, there's, there's meetings Tuesday night, Wednesday night, I don't know if we have any Thursday night, we started getting in committee meetings every Tuesday and Wednesday night, I know I'm booked every Tuesday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
Well, and that's why I'm asking...
The timeframe I ask is that, could we consider, I know we all work, though, and it's a burden on me, too, because I don't get off till five, but to do it earlier in the day on Monday, as opposed to moving it to Tuesday, because that, especially some of those later dates, if you're looking at that, if you're looking at doing it more than once.
Yeah.
And that doesn't affect staff, and staff probably love that.
Yeah, no, I'm happy to consider all that, like, this is a...
You can't go, you know, you can't, it's not an open-ended meeting, you've got to be done by a certain time, but if you...
And look, this is, this is absolutely 100% a personal request, I mean, and so if it's, if the answer is no, the answer is no, y'all can just do this meeting without me.
Like, if we had a three o'clock meeting, our meetings rarely last more than an hour and a half.
Yeah, especially...
Well, if you start work session, you'd have to go, you'd have to start at 2:30 or so.
Yeah, I mean, it's just something to consider, like I said, for tonight, I'm just asking us to consider moving the next one, so the, the August the 28th, and then gives everybody an opportunity to sort of look at their calendars, to see if there's any conflict with maybe moving one or two of the other ones. Anyway, that was...
I guess there's an advantage of being a little older than you boys, because I don't work. I could be here anytime you want me here, brother.
Counsel President? Yeah. We also have to consider public hearings, and when we have to advertise ahead of time, planning advertises two weeks prior to, and then 15 days later is the public hearing, and it specifies the date and time. Lisa, don't bring law into my personal problems up here.
So, yeah, okay, so we have one on the hook, do we have one that's, that's going to...
Yeah, yeah, all I'm asking is to reschedule the next one.
So is there one that's going to...
That's the fifth week of the month, that's not a bad week.
Is there a public hearing?
No.
Yeah, and if you go ahead and double-check for the rest of them as well, while we're looking into it, to see if anything...
I think there's three or four.
I think that's 70,000.
Yeah, I think, I mean, it looks like, based on the first and second Mondays of these months, it's the 28th, September 11th, September 25th, and then maybe the October 9th. And like I said, I'm not saying we move all of them, but if we could accommodate some of those, that would be appreciate, appreciated. Anyway, but for tonight, I'm, I'm simply asking for the, for the next one.
Don't mind bumping it up earlier in the day.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that, too, obviously, depending on...
How are your Mondays, I know, it's like, some of you work in different, I mean, cities on different days of the week, so...
They're hectic. So are Tuesdays.
Yeah.
And then, and then if we needed to, and we could have some kind of rotation where we just, because the main thing is, got to have a forum.
Yes.
So we got to maintain that, I mean, I could be here anytime, so there's one.
Yeah, I don't mind moving, we do it early in the day, that's why I'm...
Yeah, I'm, I'm...
For Jack.
I'm, I'm fine with that, too, earlier in the day is okay for me, too, depending on, obviously, what's going on that day, which is, again, why, I mean, but how early would you have to start it in order to reasonably expect to be done by?
We can also opt for no work session on that day, if there's already been a work session, I mean, that's, there's a face to that.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, all right, well, that's, do we, Lisa, do we have to vote on that, or is this something we can just agree to? I just need to know ahead of time to put a notice out. Okay. For seven days. August 29th.
Counsel President, just in case, Kim, I can't even recall if we have anything in terms of, but the way we do advertise it, if you reschedule a meeting under a vote, it kind of carries that legal advertising.
Okay.
So, just in case, I can't remember 100%.
All right, okay.
If you did vote on that, it will cover us, and there are any advertising.
I think we need to vote, because we vote on our meeting dates to the year, yeah.
All right, we'll do that. All right, perfect, thank y'all for entertaining me on there. All right, sorry, now.
Where are we going to vote?
Well, we can't move, we can't vote now, we got to...
Today or two weeks?
Still have work session.
Still have work session.
Yeah, correct. Yeah, I know, I said we can't vote right now.
Today, or?
Today.
No, we got to, we got to vote today.
That's what I kind of thought, so I was making sure of that.
All right. Back to previously scheduled events.
Exactly. You got my vote.
Thanks, sir.
Please, too. Whatever you want, brother.
All right, Kim, general government budget discussion and capital improvements.
I think that we have had general government budget meetings with pretty much all of the Counsel, I believe, everybody. So we reviewed everything, reviewed capital improvements, reviewed vehicles and equipment, there are some things we need, we know that we need to go back and sharpen our pencil over. I think tonight is to get your feedback, if there's anything that you want us to pull out and look at a little bit closer, if there's any additional questions that you had. I think we got some good feedback during the meetings, we tweaked some of that, you know, in the budget already, but again, a chance for you to review, look over it, and ask any questions that you might have. And y'all all have a packet that has the large pages, or your vehicles and equipment, and your capital improvements, and then your smaller packet that I have drafted across there, those are the individual departments by detail. One thing I do want to add, is if y'all look at the general fund, we have, you know, right now, according to Kim's calculations, we have $332,000 excess revenue over expenses, so she's been able to balance that, and this really is, from the capital improvement standpoint, a year of, you know, tidying up loose ends. We have a lot of big projects going on that y'all are well aware of, and this is just a time for us to be able to complete some of those projects, and again, look at things that just need to be tidied up. There is, we have not talked about utilities at all yet, there's a lot of infrastructure projects also in utilities, but I think the general fund itself, the projects that we have are good projects, but again, it's just about really tidying up things that we've started and need to finish.
Just a general question, you know, on all the utility, the capital improvements for the utilities, buildings and whatnot, you've got those budgeted in the general fund, or that's coming out of utilities?
And the utility individual meetings with the Counsel will be held in the next several weeks, we'll be reaching out to y'all to go ahead and get that, get those scheduled, and have a chance for you to sit down with each utility superintendent to review those projects, go on field trips if you need to, to see, you know, what they're talking about, which we've done in the past, and then we'll do another work session, probably the first one in September will be focused on utilities. on utilities.
I'm getting in the weeds here on one, but on the rec, on the proposal for the fitness court replacement, and we've got the 120 in various matching grants, where does that flow through on a revenue side? I see 80 on special grants and community projects, but I'm looking for 120.
That will, that will come back through, and I'll just have to double check to make sure I have it-
So that doesn't necessarily show up yet in revenue, that's something we would get later, that'd be kinda extra.
Yeah, well, I need to make sure that, I know in the beginning I was, I might have put the wrong number, but I'm gonna double check that one, because, but the 80 should be right. I think the 80 is correct in revenue, grant revenue, we're receiving two $40,000 grants on that, but I think the total cost of this project's around 170, so it'd be about 110 to complete it if I'm not mistaken. That includes all the concrete, the concrete, the installation, and our portion of the fit court. Is that correct, Pat?
Our, our, the total project is around 200 and more.
And ours is listed as 82.
Yeah, we need to look at that number then. But the, the 80,000 that you're seeing in that community grant, that was, that was the portion that was gonna come from the Point Clear Rotary?
And single?
Yeah, that was-
And there's a-
So the Rotary Foundation applied for the Blue Cross Blue Shield grant on behalf of the city, they wanted to apply for that grant, they wanted to help, they wanted to help with that. So they did that, they got the $40,000 for that. They approached Single Tax about doing a matching with them, so they got 40 from Single Tax. So we have $80,000 in grant revenue.
Okay, so the other, the other, the grant and the Rotary are really one of the-
The same, correct. We only have $80,000 in revenue.
One of the 40 needs to be scratched. Okay, I'm with you now.
A few other things under recreation that you will notice is, so the structural repairs at the pool, we've zeroed that out until we get some firm numbers on that. I have Councilman Boone helping me work on that and kinda vet those numbers. So we will, that's something that will come back before you again, I mean, the budget is a fluid document, I mean, we may come back and amend it based on, you know, coming back to y'all with that information. We don't have that ready in the beginning. The other thing we, you'll see is zeroed out, we took it out right now, the LED lighting retrofit of the hard courts at Mike Ford Tennis Center, we took that out just to, you know, we've talked about maybe adding another tennis court or so out there, so we talked about just going ahead and taking that out, and we can look at that down the road. That's why you see those numbers zeroed out.
There's a lot of stuff on, on this list, it would be great to get kinda I's dotted, T's crossed, I think there's, there's a time deadline on it, right?
Absolutely a time deadline, we've, I will have all this complete by the end of next year, by the end of next budget year.
Okay.
Right, Councilman Burrell?
No, you will not be able to do that. I hope that you can, but-
He threw down, he threw down a challenge.
I don't think you can do it all, but I, but I applaud you for trying.
Do y'all hear that?
It's just like, it's just like, just like adding water, you, you, you wanna get it done in an overnight-
Yes, absolutely.
You can't get it done, and, you know, not you, it's just, it's impossible to get those, all those projects done, given the challenges that we have.
I guess, I, we didn't get a chance to, to speak about it in the, in the, in the budget meeting that we had, but I, and I'm looking at, you know, the, the golf grounds and, and the golf, it just concerns me. We, we keep trying to improve it, get a return on investment, and, you know, I, I think the course has bounced back some this year, but there was a time this year that it wasn't so good, and we just, it's a, it's a roughly $900,000 increase to their budget, I just hope that that's fully vetted and that it'll, it'll make a difference. I know a lot of that, 300 of that's cart paths, and it's anything we can do to, I mean, that's starting to be a pretty, pretty big budget, and, you know, I'm not seeing a whole lot of return out of that golf course, just to be honest with you.
I will-
And I'm a golfer, and it's just, it's getting a little troubling.
I will say that, um, yeah, close to four, almost $500,000 of that is cart paths, which the cart paths we've, we've had in the budget now, I think, for three years. We've had a hard time getting a contractor to bid on it. I think Pat and Tom have kinda vetted that with, with some folks to see how we can optimize getting bids, and then the other part of that is going to be doing the additional nine holes of the drainage project on the greens.
Yeah, we've, we've, we've approved those mats.
Yeah.
Golly, that's like, seems like three years ago, Bobby, stood up here and talked about that.
It's been, it's been three years, it's been in the budget every single time, but again, getting somebody to bid on those-
Some of those just roll over every year.
It is, some of it's roll over.
I got you, so it's back in there again.
It is.
That's, that's, that's good enough, that's why I brought it up, it's just a good explanation.
If you look, Councilmember L, at the bottom of the total on the last page, you'll see what is rollover and what is new budget.
Last page of the, or smaller?
No, the last page of the larger one, sealed, my 17. You'll see that for capital improvements and for vehicles and equipment.
Oh, yeah.
Also see a comparison from last year to this year on totals.
I'm still, am I seeing the drainage stuff on y'all?
The drainage is not gonna be in here, the drainage is just gonna be just in the, in this packet, buried in drainage improvements.
Okay.
You will see a revamp of that sewer system, the grinder pumping stuff-
Okay.
-in the Boys and Girls Club. And the one thing they did ask for out there was that walkway, the canopy walkway from the back door to their reading room, I believe it is, that was one thing they asked if we could include, just a covered walkway.
I see it, it's in here.
In your packet, on this packet here on page 30, that's where you're gonna see capital improvements, where you'll see some resurfacing projects, drainage projects, so whenever you get to that detailed packet, you'll see in the capital projects fund. The other thing too that will change some of these numbers is some of these projects, I mean, we're pushing pretty hard to get them done now, in this budget year, so there could be the possibility of some of this coming out as well, as we get them done, in the next month or so, two months.
So the agenda item for resurfacing that's on tonight's agenda, is that our 2023, FY2023 appropriations?
Yes.
Was that the budgeted amount, roughly?
No, no.
Over the budgeted amount?
It's $400,000 over the budgeted amount, but you will notice in there, you can, you can go back if you look at the green sheet, two of those projects, one is the resurfacing of the Civic Center, and one is the resurfacing of the Pecan Street Building, and, and Richard's gonna speak to that item, we had hoped during the work session we would get to that, I'm not sure that we will, but he's prepared to speak to it.
Yeah, that's really the only, well, there's a, there's an ordinance we'll have to talk about, but that was the only other item that really needed a lot of discussion, I thought.
I have that, and I have Tim Bung here also to talk about the engines for the police cars and the problem they're having.
Uh, counsel, any other questions about, I mean, I know it's a lot to, to look at and try to ask something at one, ask something immediately, but have you got any additional All right. Kim, you may be seated. All right, counsel, we've got a little while left, how about committee updates?
I have none.
Corey?
Uh, yeah. I, Fairhope Advisory Board met on Friday, last Friday, there's a couple things, I think the Osprey guy came by to give us some information on that trap that we have at the One Dixie, to see where that was, and we'll get that information, we'll talk about that, because I don't have all the details of that that'll come on the next meeting possibly, as far as the information that we have, whether they're worthwhile or not. And the boys, the Eagle Scouts, you know, I wanted to talk about that, they're putting up some reefs right there, some reefs up on the pier for natural reefs, kinda with oyster beds, which is really pretty cool, that we're participating in financially to help those guys out, and to kind of, kind of continue our estuary type situation with our education with our kids, thought that was really cool. Also, something came up about, you know, us being a little bit more respectful with the bull shark, I think we're catching and not releasing bull sharks, whether we recognize what a bull shark is or not, but I think the community needs to kind of be respectful of our fishery on the pier area, and I think some of the talks was to put up some signs, educational signs about what fish you're catching, so you'll know the size to release it back, so that we don't tap our resources as far as our fish is concerned, and I think that's very important, to educate our people, and I think those signs will help kinda educate the population. You've got a lot of people that's coming outside of Fairhope on that pier, that may not know the rules, so I think those signs and educational signs will help a lot, but, and also, we talked about, a little bit about the reclamation of the water, trying to figure out some ways that we can reclaim some of this water and separate our lines, but, and we'll have more for that in the future as well. That's all I have.
I have no, no committee updates here, just Library Board meets next month.
Kevin? Okay. Um, I, just briefly, for historic preservation, the ordinance, I've been talking about it with Chris, and working on a couple of issues, trying to get some things, again, ironed out, and my hope is that we're gonna have it to present to the city council, maybe at a work session, if not next meeting, the meeting after that, and so it should be very soon. All right? Um, all right, so department head updates, Richard, why don't we start with you, and we'll talk about that paving on number 19?
And if I could, I will tell you, Tim Bung is here, he's, he's definitely Charlie Daniels with a torque wrench, but he was not, he was terrified that he got called before the principal. I, I do wanna just give you a couple things on the police Tahos, just so you know, the two in question are 2018 models, so only five years old, but to put it in perspective, you see 45,000 miles on unit 130, you say, oh my goodness, that's, that's not good, we've had engine failure, but the, the hour meter on that vehicle is 9,500 running hours, which means that the average miles per hour on that unit is 4.74. If you went and looked at our personal vehicles, our probably averages close to 15, so really that's equivalent of, of, you know, three times that mileage in running. And then on unit 105, it has 67,111 miles on the odometer at, at 8,236 hours, which is an average of 8.12 miles per hour. So, so you've gotta remember, police cars are used different than in, than our personal vehicles, they run constantly, they probably start up and don't turn off until the end of the shift, and I know that it's a pretty big lift to spend a little over $6,000 to put a crate engine in these, but here's, here's the calculus that I think the chief went through, is that a new unit costs $60,000 and you gotta equip it, yes, you can move the equipment from the old unit to the, to the new unit, if it'll fit, the Tahos went through a model change this past year, so probably the cages and all that don't necessarily move right over. So, you know, the, the vehicles are, are in good shape as far as a body chassis and drivetrain, it's just the engine has failed, and Tim wanted to let me know, and he, he said he even brought lifters, and he would be glad to show you, but there's two other 2018 models that could very well have the same problem in, in the immediate future. And I think the question is, is it worth spending 10% on that vehicle versus, you know, 60-plus thousand dollars to buy a new one that may take an extended amount of time? Turns out, one of the Chevrolet dealerships does have the engine in, both engines in stock, and they do come with a warranty. Is it 336 is what they give us? So at least we get a, you know, a three-year, 36,000 mile warranty if we go forward, so, and Tim would be glad to, to share any more detail. Real quick in road paving, I, I, I think the, the challenge here, and, and I'm just gonna tell you a factual thing, I went back and looked at the, the package from three years ago, you know, basically, what a paving contractor is paying to get asphalt to the site is what he used to charge us to put it down on the road. So we have seen a dramatic increase. It was not, three years ago, the average cost per ton in place was $95, now we're looking at $145, $155, so we've seen a, a great increase. The paving list that you have after you remove Pecan and Civic Center represents almost 3.5 miles of two-lane roads being resurfaced, and that works out when you remove the cost of the Pecan and the Civic Center, about 200,000, $200,000 per two-lane road mile. Three years ago, that price was about $130 per, per, $130,000 per one two-lane road mile, and five years ago, it was 100,000. So the reality of it is, is that our, our paving dollars don't go as far. Understand that this, this bid, as you see projects A through N listed, are additive alternates, meaning that the council can accept any combination of A through N. So if there's just no way we can get across the budget hurdle, you know, now it's kinda like picking, picking who's your least favorite child here, because I'll tell you, every road on here needs it. And just to kinda know that, that how we make that presentation to you on, on the roads that we're going after, you know, we've been trying to do a significant road in the, the fruit and nut every year, this year, it's White Avenue, we're trying to do at least one subdivision that, that, that really, really needs to be resurfaced, in the case that's, that's River Oaks and associated roads in there, and we look at other significant throughput roads that need resurfacing, Windmill would be that classification, Bayou Drive is, is the, in the area it's in, is the worst road in that area, Bancroft has been resurfaced from Oak down, Section Street is, especially at the intersection, was resurfaced, and then we've had some work up at the intersection of Oak, and, and the rest of it is, is aging, but it's still serviceable. So that's the challenge, which, which projects do we throw out if we gotta cut this number down, because, yes, it, it is more than the gas tax and impact fees that we have budgeted to cover resurfacing for this annual, and, you know, we're looking for guidance here, and, you know, we have not done any paving in Quell Creek in at least a dozen years, it may be closer to 15, 16 years. So, you know, Quell Creek Drive is just the start, and I'm sure that next year, they're gonna hope we pick up a win and, and continue on in that neighborhood, so that, that's the challenge. And I don't think anybody disagrees that the, the City Hall Civic Center parking lot is in dire need of resurfacing, and Pecan, definitely, now that we've really put it into use, has shown its age, plus to get it striped out where we maximize parking is also a benefit to our employees.
All right, counsel, I mean, I, I know we're talking about 400,000 over budget, which is not insignificant, but obviously, two of those projects, City Hall and the Pecan Building, are a little over 200,000 of that, and I don't think anybody would disagree that both of those need to be done. And so just looking at this list, I mean, obviously, I don't, I don't know that I can sit here and cherry pick something off to say, don't do that one, or do this one over that one. Do you guys have any input on whether or not to, I mean, obviously, I think we have the money, even over budget, to do these projects, and it's not like, something that's not gonna get done or needs to be done, we either do it now, or we do it next year.
Yes, and we're kinda make, you will actually see the, the list that we have to have approved as part of the gas tax next, in two weeks, and kinda made a commitment to the mayor, we're gonna get a little faster start on the resurfacing for 2024 as opposed to waiting till the very end of the fiscal year, so.
I'm like, I'm like Jay, I don't think we can cherry pick this list, I mean, I'm sure they're only on here because they're high priority, and we, we do have the money right now, but I'm not sure I like the way you're talking about a list that considers a gas tax when we haven't even passed a gas tax. That's a little troubling, that's a little bit presumptuous for me.
I'm sorry, that, this is, we have, you have to approve a master list for that extra one sense that the state passed a few years ago, so that is an annual thing I do. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Oh, no, thank you.
I thought you were talking about the one that was- I thought you were talking about the one that was talked about in the work session.
No, sir, that's the one that the extra gas tax that the state did. I apologize.
Counsel Burrell, you'll have three minutes, you may-
And just, just my one thought on the local gas tax, the urban legend is, is Perdita Beach says, if anybody ever will finally build them a gas station, they're going to pass a gas tax, so.
Thank you all.
That's good to know.
All right, thank you, Richard. All right, guys, we've got four minutes. Sorry, anybody else who had an update, let us know, but we're going to adjourn the meeting, come back at six o'clock and get started.